Okay. All right, Michael, we're starting. I call the July 1st, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting of Glencoe Park District to order. Lisa, please call the roll and note the time.
It is 7:00 AM. Commissioner Hazen.
Here.
Mr. Colby.
Here.
Commissioner Guzman is not here yet. Commissioner Reifman.
Here.
And President Spain.
Here.
Excellent. Excellent, so is anyone from the public, Andre, would you like to present? You know the drill. In matters of the public, I think you are our speaker. You haven't even seen anything yet.
So Andre Lerman, 244 Hazel, I just want first of all to say that I think the beach season has started off great. I think Shannon and staff, Adam, you've hired some great people. They're well-trained, they're motivated, the morale is high. That's also true for summer camps. In fact, that's true for your whole program. So kudos, kudos to everybody. Also, kudos to the marketing for the Glencoe Park Store. That was brilliant. That was brilliant. I think the, what you guys are about to do and talk about the beach project, that that's an example of what this park district does really, really well, which is you, you are bringing the public along on policies and major capital projects and build a lot of goodwill. And that goodwill is translated into the great results that you got recently in the referendum. And so everything that you can do to continue this process, you know, keep it going. I looked at some of this stuff here, that looks, that all looks terrific, right? And I'm very excited to see what this park district comes up with and doing. And you're going about it the right way, which is you're discussing it in open meetings, you're publicizing, you're getting input. Great job. So this park district is the envy of the North Shore. And it's not just me saying that. I've heard that from park commissioners in near, near another towns right nearby and former park board presidents who all say, what a great job Glencoe's doing. You know, you guys are being noticed. So the last thing I'm going to say is I know we, there is a beach advisory meeting a week from Thursday. My wife Janet and I typically after the meeting is over at the sun shelter, we'll bring some wine and cheese and crackers. And anybody who would like is welcome to join, whether you come for the meeting or you come at eight o'clock after the meeting, be our guest. It's always good to have kind of this, the social interaction. So anyway, I'm here to listen. Thank you for giving me three minutes of your time.
All right, thank you. You, you kept it in three minutes.
That's pretty good. You know, got the hook.
Yes.
Make sure, make sure you fill out a survey, so your input is heard too, so.
Okay, great, thank you. And thank you for your comments. Okay, if there are no other matters of the public to, at this time, we're going to move forward with a discussion on the guaranteed maximum price for the parks maintenance facility.
Great, I'm going to turn it over to Kyle, who will introduce.
Thank you, President Spain, Lisa, good evening, everyone. So we're here tonight excitedly to talk about the guaranteed maximum price proposal from Whiten Company's construction administration team for the ball field and maintenance project here at Takeoff. So just wanted to walk through a little bit of the timeline that's kind of led up to tonight to bring everybody up to speed and just as a refresher. So back in November of 2024, in January of 2025, we discussed capital projects with the board, which included the work for the maintenance center and ball field. A budget amount of $7.84 million was established for those construction costs, as well as a $784,000 contingency budget. In January of 2025, we released RFQ for the construction management services. In February, we interviewed three firms for those services. Those results were discussed at the March committee meeting and ultimately at the March board meeting. The proposal from Whiten Company was accepted, which included a 2.9% construction management fee, as well as a 1% CGL or commercial general liability insurance fee. Along the way, we've gone through about six months of design meetings, back and forth on everything related to the inside of the building with furnishings and finishes, as well as the plumbing, electrical, mechanical, site layout, site utilities, to make sure we have a functional maintenance facility in Ball Field that's done at the most economical cost. In June, we released a pre-bid or an early bid for the prefab metal building package, as well as completed 100% design drawings. This allowed the construction management team to come up with their GMP final amount for this work, which we're here to discuss tonight. So the guaranteed maximum price contract is the maximum amount that the district will pay for the construction costs, not to include any change orders that result from unforeseen conditions. The other items that are not included are FFE, which are owner items, furnishings, fixtures and equipment. And the estimate that was put together for this GMP is $7.987 million. It is important to note that this CM does include $810,000 of construction management contingency. That's meant to cover things like cost escalation, tariffs or unfavorable bid results. The work is still publicly bid and competitively bid. And ultimately, the district cannot pay above that $7.987 figure. We can pay below if we have favorable bids, but it will not exceed that amount short of any change orders. The district's budget again for this work was $7.8 million with $780,000 in our own contingency set aside. Staff does feel comfortable with this GMP amount. It's within 2% of our budgets, including that $810,000 of construction management contingency, on top of the $780,000 of owner contingency. In the packet, it's included the detailed breakdown of the costs. In addition to that, we have the site logistics plan, as well as the construction timeline, all of which fall in line with our conversations with the board, as well as the construction management and architects team, ensuring that this work is started in the fall and completed by summer of 2026, as to minimize the impact to our operations. We do have Craig Pulte from Whiten Company here tonight to speak to the GMP package from Whiten Company's perspective. I think we'll bring Craig up to present on that, and then we'll open it up for questions and discussion.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Craig Pulte, I'm a director with White Construction. So you did probably the best explanation that I've ever seen by anybody from a park district regarding a GMP. I think the only thing Kyle did fail to mention is the contingency money that is included in the GMP is $810,000. The way that we guarantee our pricing, we typically do it at this level of documentation, which is 100% design development. Whatever contingency is left at the end, the district gets 100% of it back. So we don't share in savings, and I think that's a really important part. So our job is to try to manage the money, as well as build the building, let all the packages, and then try to give you guys back as much money as we can. So we just don't bill for it at the end. It's not like we give it back, we just deductive change order for whatever's left, 100% of it goes back to you. So there's no incentive for us to pad an estimate or anything like that. The numbers that we provide you are actual and real, based on the amount of work that we buy and sell over the course of time and our historical records. And then also watching the market to see what's going on. That's why we bid the PMB early, because we wanted to beat the tariffs to the market or any kind of price increase on the steel. So we took a chance and bid that out early. So if you guys have any questions or you need any clarification, please feel free to ask.
What happens, there's a number of details in here regarding the planned timeline. Is there going to be, is there a contingency? Or what happens if the project exceeds the timeline? Or is that another discussion? Or is that?
It kind of is. I mean, that, our schedule's based on our experience. And in the length of each trade and the pre-engineered metal buildings, obviously the longest one, because the site work can go around about, go around the outside of the building at the same time. So we try to condense the schedule as much as we can. So the less time more onsite, the more value that is provided in our general conditions. So we're kind of, our, our fees are locked into the timeline as well.
I was just thinking about how projects expected to be complete. And I saw that the ball field isn't going to be in service for the fall. And that I think we wanted to have it ready for camp, because the kids are out there. So is there like a guaranteed time for?
I can speak to that. So the first, the first thing, we knew that fall would not be open. We knew that, because we had to start construction. So the first thing we're going to be doing is the ball field. And so that's the first project and everything around that. So if for some reason the building gets delayed, we could still open up the camp area that they use, so it won't affect our programming earlier. So as soon as they get, that's the first thing they're in, they're going to do the ball field. There's not much, there's some restoration with the grass outfield, but not a lot. So they'll get that in hopefully in fall, so they can reseed it and get growth. So our, we're looking like May, if everything goes correct and Kyle can jump in anytime. It looks like we'll be over the, open by, by the spring season, but we're not guaranteeing it, but it looks like the possibility.
Correct, to Lisa's point, the goal is to have that ball field work done first thing. I could speak to that as well. The site logistics, logistics plan on page, I believe it's towards the back end, page 17, shows the intended logistics plan, starting in spring of 2026. And that's the goal, is to have that work done with the, the site lighting, the ball field lighting and the ball field itself. So we can then move that construction fence, basically to be the perimeter of the outfield and open it up to play.
Right, and the goal is to get the building open by May, give staff time, time to move into it, so we can demolish the old buildings and then reconstruct the parking lot as well.
So you probably see the July, it goes to July. That's because we are, we chose to utilize our current two buildings as like construction, area, storage, things like that. So that cannot be, those buildings can't be torn down, so that the new building's ready. So that would be the last thing, they'll be torn out and then new driveway we'll put in, they'll pave that over. So that's, that's why.
That's like June, July-ish, right? Exactly, that's why.
But that's just that area and won't affect our programming.
Right.
I have like seven questions.
Sure.
Okay, first one, the EV chargers, as a recent purchaser of an EV, I'm excited to see that. Why are we paying for that? Why don't we have a third party, like a ChargePoint, come and pay for that and actually make money off of it, instead of spending $55,000 on it?
I think we could absolutely look into that. I know we started looking into the EVs back two or three years ago, and it didn't make sense at the time from a utility standpoint. I think we can have follow-up conversations about working with a ChargePoint. The infrastructure cost is the one I'm not sure about, if ChargePoint would cover the amount of utility work that it's going to take to pull over to those spots.
Right, you do set up an iCloud, an iCloud account with that, so that people can pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that may, and the Village has done that downtown, so we may be able to learn.
That's what we're looking, but this is really the infrastructure of it.
Yeah, $55,000 for, you know, 40 amps of electricity is heavy, it's expensive. But, okay. I did not realize, and I'm sure you probably told me, so I apologize if I forgot, but we are tying in the baseball field lights and infrastructure into this?
Yes, that's all one project, yep.
Okay, that makes me feel better, because it, I saw that in there and it's a hefty expense, like half a million, right? Something like that, so, okay. Probably a question for you. We're putting a lot of solar panels on this. Do you expect electricity costs to come down versus what we're paying today? It's probably a minimal amount that we're paying for the shop. But like, do we expect to reap some operational benefits? Either lower Pderma insurance, because our floor is actually going to be flat, as opposed to dirt or electric expense? Like, do we expect any good guy OpEx here?
Kyle probably is.
Oh, Kyle, maybe you know that, okay.
The second part, I don't know about any Pderma insurance rate drops for this project, but I will say for the solar, absolutely we'll realize cost savings on our energy bills. One of the things we're considering, based on how bidding goes and what sort of surplus funds do or don't come back, is what options. We have really two options. We can lease the roof to a third-party company, which is no up, no cost to the district.
Right.
And then we only capture a certain amount of savings, utility bill credits. The other option is to purchase them outright and capture 100% of that savings. I think there's pros and cons. We don't have to make that decision tonight. I think we want to see how budgets unfold and what the options are without, you know, overrunning things.
Absolutely, we want to see how the bids come in, how much money we have to play with, and then do a whole presentation on that.
Yeah, exactly.
Very cool, I'm, I'm excited about that. And then my last question is, I am surprised at how low your FFE is, at 20 grand. That to me is shockingly low for someone who spends a lot of money on FFE in his current job, like.
That number's light, to be perfectly frank. I think what I was not accounting for in that memo dollar amount is the racking systems that we'll need in throughout the building. That's again, something we're going to budget for next fiscal year, so that would be part of budget discussions from this fall and winter, with a more solidified number, whether that is funded through surplus on the project costs or on the Fund 65 capital project budgets. The number is light for what we'll likely have to do in the cold storage areas.
Thank you, that.
But it does go into the next budget year and how, how much we, actually, if we don't use a lot of contingency, that'll play into what we actually can do in that part of it.
Okay, I did say that was my last one, but I have a little more. Mr. Cuchara, how do you feel about all of this? I love to get the finance person's perspective.
I, I think Kyle summed it up, you know, accurately. And what we've budgeted for all in is again, right under the eight, the $8 million. And, you know, you factor in the contingencies, both on whites and then the owner contingency that we have in place. I would say I'm comfortable with, with, with the numbers that have been presented.
Okay, thank you for the report. It was really interesting to read it and see all the details. But I don't know if anyone else has other questions?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Okay, so then at the, at the next meeting, we'll basically be approving the guaranteed max.
Correct, we'll, so is there a consensus of advance approval? Okay.
Yeah, that's right, very thorough.
Thank you very much, that was great to see the progress too. Excellent. So next, we have a visioning discussion for the beach house, trellis, boat storage and boardwalk with Whiten Company. And Anya and Matt will be leading the discussion.
Absolutely, from Whiten Company, come on up. Hello. Okay.
It is so nice to have a fully presentable room.
It really is.
Like, I remember debating about this and it just, it's very nice to have that.
If it turns on.
Well, I realized that's the screen went blank.
It's really, really nice. You know, we had a big storm here Sunday, Sunday night and power's knocked out off to Takeoff. So, yeah, yeah. Everything was out of, out of sync and, there we go. So we were, we were a little bored, like, oh, there we go.
Oh, there it is, okay. Yeah, we tested this like only 500 times.
Time to move the water plant.
All right. First, I want to make sure you can all hear, it got a little tough in the back. And I, I first want to thank you all for allowing us today. This is such a special project at Glencoe, and we're kind of honored to be associated with this project. And I think that the public comments really hit it, that there's a lot of history to the beach and there's also a lot of eyes on the beach. And we want to make sure that we are not designing this for you, but we're designing it with you. And so a lot of what we're doing tonight is the first step of a two-night exercise in which we want to get the ideas and thoughts and opinions of both the committee here, the board, as well as some of the community on, and what are their preferences for some of the items that we're considering to renovate at the beach? Because we definitely want to make sure it's a home run from the beginning. A lot of this goes to the success of the referendum. You know, the public voted and this was, you know, part of those projects. And this is going to be something that we definitely want to solicit the input. So tonight, Anya will walk you through the process. We've set up a method that allows the community to both do more traditional, provide their comments on sticky notes or on paper, but we also are introducing an electronic method. Maybe they don't have the time to go through it tomorrow evening, or they want to share it with other members of their family. We're giving that opportunity to, same content to address and to review and to kind of vote on, but it allows a couple of different methods in which you can provide your input. But what we wanted to do initially is just kind of walk this committee through what would be presented to the community, so that it kind of, an opportunity for you as well to say, yeah, these are important to us, or maybe you missed a topic we want to address, because we do have some time between now and tomorrow, if we needed to kind of make any minor tweaks. But, so I'll have Anya kind of walk through the process. We're going to be here and can kind of assist on any of the questions you might have or anything you see that might need some additional thought.
All right, beach is amazing and the goal is to make it even better. First, so the, the slides that we are showing here, we have five main slides. They're exact copy of the boards that are placed at the back of the room here. And these are the same boards that the public will see tomorrow. First slide is an introduction slide. This is the Glencoe beach here, and we highlighted the areas and elements that we will, we will be improving. So it goes from the left to right, it goes from trellis, beach house, sun shelters and boardwalk, and then boat storage and lockers here. The images at the bottom, they are screenshots of the images shared during the referendum on the left-hand side, the three images. And other images are, as a reminder, are the images of trellis, beach house, shelters, boardwalk and, and boat storage here. Each board you will see have in the upper right, right corner, it has a QR code that will take you to the survey, a little bit about the survey a little bit later. And there is also a project timeline here on the right-hand side. There is one more project that is happening on the beach, and this is the playground, and the playground meeting happened a week ago. So then each, each board here or each slide here, it talks about specifically about the components that we are improving. So the first one is the trellis. There is a picture of the trellis in the second picture from the, from, from the top. It has a stone base and it has a roof that, that is made of wood. And the idea here is to keep the stone piers, but replace the roof. And what would you like to see this roof to be? So we are asking a few specific questions, and we're also asking for additional comments or anything that you, you may want to share with us. So the specific question about the trellis is, what kind of roof would you like to see? Is it the flat roof? Or should we think about the gable roof, because this is how the beach house is? Or should we look at completely different solution, which is operable trellis, which is, they can close and open on sensors, on rain sensors or sun sensors, and will be open when it's sunny, but if it's raining, it will close automatically. That's an option. Of course, we would fit it in nicely with the architecture of the existing trellis and make it work aesthetically. Just a few options. And if you have any other comments or suggestions, please either post them on the boards or use the survey.
For that, for that roof one?
Which roof?
The first.
The first?
The flat?
Sorry, the first, this question that you have here, just to be abundantly clear here.
Yep.
To me, I think of it already having a flat roof, which it does, but that flat roof is open. So you may want to just say a clean, simple roof line, you know, covered, permanently covered or something, because I didn't realize that they were permanently covered inside, where the third option, where I was like, oh, that's it. Back and, the third one is the sort of retractable, right?
Right.
But the first two are a permanently covered roof. And I did not get that from your questions. I don't know if anyone else didn't get that, but I didn't pick up on it.
I got it from the picture.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it from the picture, but I just want to.
And there is also a note that these are not, that actual designs, this is just for inspiration, right?
No, for inspiration only, not final.
So they get, don't get stuck on the, you know, these are examples.
Are you, are you upgrading electricity there too? Or you're going to keep electricity there?
To the trellis?
To the trellis, I think there's just one, one stone pillar has electricity.
Yeah, if there's a need to add additional convenience outlets, that, that's not a major undertaking to do, that's a good note to have.
Absolutely.
And I'm sorry.
The current trellis system, I've, you know, it's wood slate and then staff went on and put a cover on it. So my 13 years has never, it's never been without a cover on it. So that's why we didn't even give an option of an open roof, because we know our needs.
The operable one, the material, what is the material? Is that something you're going to get to, or?
It is, the blades themselves, they're aluminum. And there is a possibility, the option exists to simulate the wood, but generally they're aluminum.
Okay.
And aesthetically, I wouldn't worry about yet, you know, if aluminum, you know, if this is something that doesn't currently exist on the top of the trellis, we would make sure it blends in the best way possible. And we would surround it with wood or wood-like material. Okay?
Yep.
Beach house. So there's, they're planned renovations to the interior of the beach house, which includes updating restrooms. And we have a couple of questions here. While updating the restrooms, it will be just, it will just take part of the building and there will be a space remaining. So the question number one is, what should we do with that space? Should that be a rentable multipurpose room? Which is, you know, flexible space that anybody can rent out? Or should we provide indoor showers? And the question also is, you know, with rentable multipurpose room, it means that the showers available to people going to the beach are just outdoors. But they are there, very close, adjacent to the beach house. Or is the preference to have fully private showers inside? That's a question number one. Question number two, when we are working on the layout of those restrooms, should we think about private, universal, gender-neutral restrooms? Or should we plan for traditional restrooms that are either men or women?
With that one, people might say, oh, put a family restroom. We do not have the space to do a woman's locker room, a man's locker room, and then a family. We do not have the space for that, so.
I have a question. For if someone wanted that rentable multipurpose room option, how many people approximately could fit? We might want to put that up there. I'm just trying to envision the size.
It's a really good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Does this have dimensions or how many, like?
Yeah, something.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, and the last question for the beach house is, explaining that due to the terrain challenges, this is like at the bottom of the beach and that the hill is very steep and there is no direct access to it, the park district is not able to provide concessions and prepare food onsite. But packaged food is being provided currently. And the question is, should we, should we keep providing and offer prepackaged food and beverages? Or no, or no, we don't think the packaged food is necessary.
So is the idea there that we would reuse that space, so we would never be able to do concessions from that area? Or kind of, what is the?
Correct, that is true. Yes, we would, we wouldn't, we would take where the concessions is now and make that the multipurpose room. So, we would do concessions. As you recall, you know, for years, we've been trying to do concessions down there. There's not enough demand, first of all, because we've tried many different outside vendors There's not enough demand, first of all, because we've tried many different outside vendors and there just isn't demand because there's not consistent amount of people. There's not consistent weather, so they don't get that enough draw to make it worth their while to hire staff. I think we've had, what, three vendors all bail. We've tried food trucks. They, they don't come down because of the inconsistent weather, just not profitable of them. So the board, I don't know, about three years, four years ago, chose not to subsidize because that's what would have to happen if we did concessions down there. We would have to subsidize, the taxpayers would, food options down there and chose not to do that moving forward.
I was just wondering, I mean, I, if we use that concession area for events, like or special things where we losing that, like, I don't know if we ever serve food out of that area for.
We can still, we can still do that. I think that the purpose is if you create a multipurpose space with sinks and options like that, I think the goal would be to have a more functional space for parties and events.
And our camps, to be honest, that's, that's also a place for camps. Cause like right now, we don't have really, we're, we're using that area for our ever going, growing aquatics camp and day camp when there's weather.
To Bobby and Lisa's point, I think, you know, the goal here is to determine, do we want to turn that space into a multipurpose room? And then once we have that direction from the board and from the public, then we would get into the detail of, do you want a full service, a kitchen on one side of the room? Do you just need a fridge? How do we want that room to look? But I think the first step is to figure out, do we want really showers or a multipurpose room?
Kitchen for concession purposes is totally different than providing cooking space. So when we do, when you have to do concessions, you need certain kind of freezers, commercial grade, freezers and refrigerators and ice cream and.
Air ventilators, like air, air ventilators.
It's just much more complex, takes up much more room.
A lot of sinks.
Yeah.
For prepackaged, you don't need all that stuff.
Correct. Right, exactly. So that's why we're saying, do you want us to continue to do the prepackaged? Cause we do have to build that in probably behind, they'll do design, but does, do we still want that option? That's what we're asking.
How successful is it currently?
It does, it does. Okay. Five or $6,000 of revenue every year. It's not, not a lot, but it's typical things like.
I mean, really, how many meals is selling? I think more than just, it's nice. It's not losing, but.
A lot of it, I think, is the kids at.
Yeah.
Like kids buying candy.
Yeah.
That, that's. That's what this is.
It's, it's a snack shack at the end of the day. And it's probably would be more like combined in with the general operation. Right now it's over to the side with a separate staff having to sit there. But we could probably put it in more with the general operation and free up that space on the left hand side for, for other usage. So we still have those snack options. It's just, we wouldn't be doing like fried chicken or pizza or hot dogs, which sometimes you see at pools.
I guess I would just say like when I read, if I was reading these questions without the background, I don't think I would have understood how that related to the multipurpose room at all. It seems like when you read this, my assumption was that the rentable multipurpose room would be taking up the current bathroom space because it was up there with a bathroom question. And then for the prepackaged items, I, I guess. Is that even necessary to cover for the, I guess, I just, I just like, can you sell it behind the regular desk? I guess I'm just, I just, it did, it wasn't clear to me how that fits into the.
I hear you. Yeah, I guess what we wanted to get across is that this, this question is actually education question. Because what we're going to get in this like put a concession stand, put it, we want full concession. And this was kind of, you know, we cannot do full concessions at the beach. It's just not profitable. So this is more of an education question. So that's why it's in there. Correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
But these are three independent questions that are not correlated to each other is the way I read it.
Trying to get a pulse on what the community's priorities are.
You could get, you could get, you know, got it. Yeah, I.
Cause the design is not done. The design, the design is not done. We're just trying to understand what the priorities of the community are.
Do you want, do you want a multipurpose room? Or do you want an indoor shower facility? If you do both, we can have both.
I do have a question. I know maybe you kind of touched upon it, but what is your guys' vision of a multipurpose room at a beach? Knowing my, my, my thought is who wants to be indoors at the beach? I guess you can serve cake in there and stuff like that, but party, but.
Yeah. I think it's birthday parties, which you could in theory put it adjacent to a playground, special events. We have a lot of internal camps. We have a lot of parties that are under the trellis that some people will know in the room that you're, you're very concerned about the weather up until the party happens.
I've been there.
So, so I think it would get, personally, I think it would get a lot of use. And it's also based on what I've seen. If you look at Rosewood and Highland Park, they have a very successful interpretive set.
Have examples.
And it's a programming area for us too. So when we say multipurpose, don't think of totally the rentable as a majority, really during camp, camp hours, it would probably be reserved for our camps.
Yeah, staff trainings too. So, you know, there's quite a large staff area that's kind of underutilized a little bit with the current layout. So it could be used for more staff trainings and services.
How large would this room likely be?
Probably about, I'm just going to guess here, but probably about thousand square feet.
Okay, that's a big room. Okay.
Right, kind of a classroom size. Yeah. And like everybody said, we haven't designed it yet. So we want to see, we're going to have some of that over space.
The standard room, I was picturing like a classroom, a small classroom.
Yeah.
But for thousand square feet, you can do a lot of things with that.
How big is this?
Yeah.
Thousand square feet, it's what, 20, 50 by 50?
If you divided the building into thirds, it would be about one third of that beach, current beach houses roughly.
Is this a thousand square feet from me to the screen?
Yeah, half of the space.
Half of it. So like for me to there is a thousand square feet.
Whole room's probably about 22 hundred square feet.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's going to be this big. I think it's probably from Bobby on.
Okay, from, I'm going to assume from Aaron on, it's, it's a good size.
Um, the last two windows would be a good example.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Ah, right. That helps. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now that, that context is really helpful, I think. Okay. But when, when we have the discussion or the, the public's coming to look at the boards, there'll be people there to answer.
Then we're going to give the same presentation. Before we will give this presentation, because it starts at seven, we'll give this presentation and then we'll walk to the boards. So this is good insight because maybe one of us will be up there explaining some of these. Okay, this is why we're asking this question. But, but we also want to make it intuitive because we will, there's a large probably amount of people that will take the survey just getting in it through the email. We saw that with the playground one, but really that's why we wanted people to come to the meeting so we could explain. So if we'll look at a ways, we can clean that up a little bit. Erin, I can see her mind's already turning. So.
If this is not a shower, is there another opportunity to have a shower area?
But outside.
Right, outside, instead of inside.
Yep. So we, we see that most people, the use right now is just to shower off. Like their feet and things, they're not taking a full blown shower. They're going there. And so what happens is when they do that, then the indoor beach house gets really wet and sandy. So it actually, we found since during COVID, when we didn't offer the showers because we couldn't, that the rest, the locker room stayed much cleaner. So that's when this idea of like, oh, let's put this outside. It would just be easier because people are just, you know, rinsing the sand off their feet or their body.
It also wreaks havoc on interior plumbing when you have all that sand into the domestic plumbing systems that are existing currently.
I was envisioning that room with all the sand coming in, the kids and everything else too. It's got to be a bit of an upkeep for that multipurpose room.
I think the type of flooring, you know, further future designs, but the type of flooring materials would be a consideration, knowing it's a sandy environment for sure.
Always washable.
Right? Sun shelters and boardwalk. So there's currently four, I'm going to say maybe single family or smaller sun shelters. And one is like multi-use shelter over there. They will be replaced and the same with the boardwalk that is in front of them. Currently the boardwalk is, it is wood like product in there that's, that is not the best durability. And based on the experience with the boardwalk that was created on the pier, concrete and stamped concrete is much better for, in this beach environment here. So we have a few questions here before we start designing. One is more on the character, taking the temperature and on, on the character and architecture and the style here. Knowing that we are right next to the beach house that has very specific architectural style. How should we think about it? Should we just rebuild existing and maintain the existing sound shelter aesthetics, but update them with new materials? This is the picture number one. Number two, should we look at the traditional style architecture? Classic design elements that closely match the existing beach house? Or should we look a little bit into, into the future and look at the blend of traditional and modern, complementing the beach house while introducing updated design elements? Or should we just look at the very contemporary style that is a clean, that has clean contemporary look, that introduces more current architectural expression? And it doesn't mean we'll be completely out there and it will still, will be in harmony with the beach house. But should we just abandon the idea of matching the beach house, you know, one, one in one? And creating identical style?
Am I saying this right? The contemporary one likes to go much larger structure than.
It's, the idea here is, so that's very hard to find a contemporary structure that is, you know, that, that is a sun shelter. So the idea here is, for example, should we think of maybe a continuous roof structure, whether it's trellis or completely enclosed, that has multiple sun shelters in it? And, but it looks like one cohesive longer building. It doesn't have to be straight. It would have the proportions of the beach house. And again, not try to design it here on the spot, but just like thinking of other ideas. And this is, this example is from Winnetka, Womet. So this is actually their beach house over there, but you know, but examples like this exist around us here. So how should we think about it? Should we match? Should we stand out? Should we look forward or should we fit in?
Besides the actual look, does the one structure give you any advantages or disadvantages?
That's kind of a next question. This will be about the privacy and, and effects like that. Yes, so this question is purely about aesthetics. What would you like to see? Are you forward looking or are we fitting in and using the materials that's, that, you know, are historically like very traditional and where, where do we stand?
I have a question. In the contemporary style, the way it looks here, can it function also as another room, sort of like a multipurpose room?
So I wouldn't say it's multipurpose room, but I, I imagine, I imagine because we have right now a larger sun shelter that, you know, can, we have a longer table there. This is like a triple the size of the smaller one. I imagine we will be creating another one like that within this structure as well.
So imagine, imagine. Open ear. Yeah. So like what I'm imagining is, and maybe this is where you were going, Gary, is like in that bigger one, it might, it's probably more expensive, but like from a return on investment, it might be better if the purpose can be multi-purpose. So it's, you know, a sun shelter, it's serves a purpose right now, but it could possibly have classes or it could possibly be another conference area. Or it could be modular where you have the sun shelters, but it could all be booked into, I don't know, I could be wrong. That's why I was asking if the vision for that last one, based on the picture is still like, kind of like a multipurpose room. Wouldn't be totally enclosed, right?
Right.
Right.
You should have a yoga class in there.
Like a yoga, a birthday party, a conference.
They're small.
Well, this, this is a double one. It has two big examples.
Like even, even so, it's, the double one is still, you're talking people seating.
Sits 24 and the bigger one and 12 and 12 and the smaller one.
You're talking about 20 people. Yeah. Which is a class or a small conference room. The problem is that, that what, and yes, we could, but for example, if you want to use your yoga, then someone would have to move the tables. So, but definitely for, for classes that use utilized tables, absolutely. People use that now for that, to be honest with you.
I guess I thought Jackie's point was maybe is that you could even expand it more than the current. Like, like the spacing between could be like retractable or openable to make it into one giant room.
Yeah, like it's exactly right. Like, and again, this is just based on the picture. So I don't want to like put an idea if it's not realistic. I don't think it's realistic to do retractable because of the sand. That would be in those tracks.
Tracks getting jammed up in those.
Yeah, there's like, there's other options. There's, excuse me, curtains, there's shades that can be pulled down. So that could be an effect.
Yeah.
And, and this could be subdivided. But now it kind of takes us to the next question because we are thinking about it as well as we are designing. And again, right now there is four plus one larger one. How important is privacy in between them? And when we will be designing them, I know when we were working on the referendum images, there was like different, we're trying to imagine different zones, kind of replacing them one in one, just not to over promise anything. But there, there could be a zone that is more shaded, that could be a zone that has a grill in it. There could be a zone that is sunbathing, that could be a zone that has sand for kids to play in front of it, right? That could be this kind of things if we want to accommodate a lot of activities within one shelter. But if we are trying to place as many as possible there, we're asking the question about the privacy, how important is privacy? So if we propose something like the shade, pull out, pull down shade or a curtain in between, it's just a curtain, right? Like people will be right next to other people. And so the next question that is there is asking, how important is the privacy for you? Would you like a full wall? Would you like? It's very important. I would prefer full separation and privacy between sun shelters. Number two, somewhat important, a bit of separation would be nice, but it's not essential. And the last one is not important. I'm comfortable with an open, shared layout between the sun shelters.
Currently we don't really have much in the way of separation, right?
Yeah.
No, you.
Open space.
But you have a space in between.
Yeah.
And that's kind of exactly the same size as the sun shelters. And if they're, if I remember correctly, they're 12 by 12 fish. Size wise, and then there's an airspace in between.
Going back to the design, is it realistic at all if say you wanted to have the one long shelter, like the modern one, contemporary, I should say? And you want it in a traditional style? Is that an option or is that just becomes too expensive and too?
I wouldn't look at right now at the budget. You know, it's, it's purely, you know, what would.
Is it a realistic option then?
It's a realistic option. Yeah.
If, if we did, just thinking through the long, the longer one. Don't we already have that though on the other side with the, what would be the difference then between that and the trellis that we already? That longer? How many?
So trellis, it is longer, as you can see, the one on the left here, maybe not from this picture. From this one here. So trellis is, I would say larger width wise and longer than the multi-use shelter that is probably, let's say it's the last, the last sun shelter is about 36 by 12, I would say, right? Because it's like three, three of them together. Trellis, it's size of a classroom when you think about it. It's really a community space. It's, you can fit way more picnic tables in there. Not just like three long way as, as in the sun shelter over there. So that's kind of, that is, I was thinking maybe that's actually more appropriate one.
Right.
And larger size for the yoga class.
But I just want to remind everybody that people like those picnic tables.
Right.
Over there, I feel like we might already have.
Yeah, exactly. I agree with you. I, I also want to caution, I know shades were talked about. I know curtains were talked about. You have to remember the wind down there.
Yeah.
There, there's no way a shade will survive down there if you're going to pull it down between.
And people outside of operating hours pretty heavily. So.
Yeah.
Whether they break them or how they use them or climb on them. So it has to be very durable for year round. And for the people that use it.
So I would caution any kind of, just, I'm just being honest, any kind of separation with a curtain or a shade, they would just get vandalized. They would get, you know, we would constantly be replacing those. We would constantly be replacing those and they wouldn't look nice within a year, so.
Is it worth it to? Do you want to even ask the question? I mean, I guess what you're asking for is should we do a permanent? Thing as opposed to a shade or curtain, but is it even worth it to ask the question?
We didn't even ask that question. That just came, came up today. So the question we're asking is, do you want full separation?
Right.
Or do you want privacy in between? So the privacy in between, we have, we have pictured actually a solid wall.
Yeah.
Between them on one side, you know, and then, yeah, it would have to be a solid wall. We cannot do curtains, we can't do shades. It just wouldn't be practical.
I guess.
Grass, it could be long grasses like.
Be long grasses. Yeah, it could be landscaping between.
Yeah.
You're right about that. We could get really tall grasses between, so it doesn't actually have to be a wall, but it could be grasses. So we would design that later, maybe bring a couple of options.
I mean, like, I I guess.
I don't want you guys to get into this, the sign, like, because we, we would, they will present a couple of options.
Yeah.
Solid wall, grasses, grasses aren't as much made in terms of you think. Um, and then? Um, so just what's really important is would, do, do, do people want that separation?
Yeah.
Or are they okay going boom, 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 and having a party right next to you within, you know, with no separation?
I guess my, my point was? If you don't feel like there's a feasible way to maintain a separation that is aesthetically pleasing? Endurable and fits our budget, don't ask the question. But if you think there is something there, then.
There is, the, the feasible solution is a wall or grasses.
Yeah.
Right? So we didn't ask like, we just said, do you want separation? Because we can design those three things. We just can't design shades or curtains.
I, I would put out there that if you were to tell me that grasses were your mode of separation, I wouldn't consider that to be separation. Like you can hear everything.
So that comes, that comes into the design portion, right?
Right.
If, if they bring back, okay, here's one option, a wall, here's the grasses, and then in design, if when we, we will have another meeting after it's designed and say? Which one do you like? And people will vote on that. Then you'll get that, you'll take that one out if people.
I hear you, and you, you're, you're probably right. I, I'm a little bit also nervous about meeting fatigue? About how much can we drag out of these people to come back and constantly say?
Well, it's not constantly.
It's up to them.
Remember, they wanted, a lot of community input on this. It's not constantly, it's this meeting.
Yeah.
So it's one, then we'll have another one.
September likely.
September, oh, yeah, probably September time. That will be the, okay, here's our design options and we'll, we'll, we'll do playground and this one at the same time. And that would be the second meeting. So I don't believe it's, you know.
Good. I just, I don't want to go back to the public for every.
And we'll send out a survey too, so.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think my kind of question is? People might like the concept until they see the design? Because it's not what they had pictured in their head.
Right.
Which is possible, yes. We're just trying to draw down.
Because I think like, you know, we're asking a bunch of questions and I'm assuming that people reading this will have similar questions? And they might make different assumptions than what we're learning.
And that's when we go through design, that's what, you know, if, if we, they design something like, oh, that's what? With majority of people, that's not what we think, we're thinking this, then that's when we tweak it.
Right, and we may get back at the design meeting, oh, my God, I don't like any of these, right? And then you do nothing, right? So that's a.
Back to drawing board anymore. We're trying to, you know.
Yeah, eliminate that.
Yeah, yeah, anymore.
Yeah, we're trying not to miss the big boat, right? Um, here, just to get general direction and then we can work the details. Um, and last question here is, um, since we'll be replacing the boardwalk that is in front of these shelters? Um, it will be wider and and more durable. Uh, and we're explaining that here in the question? Uh, that we're replacing the boardwalk adjacent to sun shelters with durable, low-maintenance concrete surface. This material offers a variety of design options. Which style would you prefer? The stamped concrete mimicking wood planks that is currently um, at, at the pier? Or stamped concrete with stone pattern? Something that is uh, adjacent to the beach house? Or should we just keep the smooth um, uh, boardwalk look and smooth concrete? Um, in place of, of wood planks?
What's the current material right now? Is it just?
It's trex, trex stacking on wood.
It's a wood-like plank.
Bending, bending wood planks.
And that's what we used to have on the pier too.
Yeah.
And so we got rid of that. We've been really happy with the concrete up here.
Um, related to this question, but not so much. Um, the? Handicapped accessible?
Ramp?
Ramp that we put out there, which is awesome, and I'm so glad that we have that. Is there an opportunity to make that weave into this and have it like permanent or? Is that something that?
We're talking the rollout ADA mat that's at the end of the existing boardwalk. So I think the way, so this is, we're talking the boardwalk that runs in front of the sun shelters.
I know, I'm wondering if there's a way to, to build a permanent one for our ADA friends that they needed.
You can't take it all the way down to the, to the, to the water level.
Yeah.
Because we have to bring the sand, you know, the.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but there's possibility we can run a little bit by this, by the playground and that will come in design.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for, I love the fact that we have that. I mean, I think we probably have to, but.
But that's reason for us office so that we can get the.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Does it matter in your opinion what shelter we choose? Then what, what concrete you choose then? I mean, the two should be cohesive, right?
Um, they should be.
So it's a hard question to answer when you need to, you know.
But it doesn't, you know, um, I think we can blend in together the right way. It doesn't mean if we have uh, the contemporary look that we cannot use a stone. Right? Because regardless, we'll try to uh, create a cohesive architectural appearance? And the facade of all of them, the trellis, the beach house and, and the sun shelters. And the boat storage slash lockers, a lot of questions here because, and these are mostly? Um, for the boat owners or kayak owners and paddleboard owners. Um, and um, they are here to address? Um, change the approach to the boat storage and also to the lockers. So um, first of all, I can read it all, but you know, I'm sure uh, this, this may be a little bit? Too much right now here, but it is? Um, the question is? If you owned a sailboat or paddleboard or a kayak? Um, do you need a locker access? And do, do you need a storage for it? And also in addition, do you need a locker? And the idea here is that the lockers that are currently out there, those blue lockers uh, here? Um, they, they're kind of like falling apart. They're in the sand. They will be moved inside. And they will be replaced with more um, like a system lockers that modular um, type. And another question is asking if? Um, what size locker do you feel is appropriate? And is it the small locker just for your personal items? Or is it uh, you know, for your bag, medium size? Or large lockers uh, that, that holds the gear? Um, you know, that is similar to the size that it is right now. Right now, all the lockers are the same size? And if I'm not mistaken, they are like, if you're renting a spot for your boat, you automatically get a locker.
Correct.
Correct, so.
Subject availability.
Yes, so idea here, uh, here is just to, you know, is there a variety of lockers needed? Uh, for people storing different things, different way?
I have a question, yeah. Um, and I apologize, I was a bit late. Um, and if it was covered, I apologize again. In the design of the storage in the lockers? Is the concept just, we're talking about the individual physical kayak, sailboat, et cetera, are you talking about? We'll have a boathouse with the storage and lockers inside the boathouse? Because right now, everything for the most part is outside.
Yeah, so I, I think really the, the crux of what these questions are after is recognition that we have a demand for? Boats, paddleboards, kayaks and a limited amount of space that we can utilize. And part of that issue is? The location layout of the locker systems as well as the current racking system. So I think the goal is to understand? Current boaters and prospective future boaters, what they actually need? So we can determine how to best lay out both the racking systems and the lockers.
Okay.
Um, and so it's, it's, uh, I didn't even mention moving things inside. It's more about figuring out where best to utilize existing beach space? To accommodate the lockers and the racking systems that we need currently and to meet demand for future additional boaters and their storage.
Yeah, correct. We could, so currently we, right now, we have a waitlist of a hundred. You, no, no.
It's down, it's pretty significantly down, like twenty to twenty-five people.
So we have twenty, twenty-five people on the waitlist now for mostly kayaks and paddleboards. But we really don't have space to put those new, so? We're trying to determine is if we had, you know? Twenty to thirty new kayak spaces, do they all need lockers, right? If you just need a place for a kayak and a paddleboard, can you carry your life jacket and paddle down with you every time you come? Because that would allow us to accommodate more people. So then we would, you know, really look at that, you know, a sailboat, we would always provide storage for the sail. But do, do we need a big locker for sailboats or? Do not need that much. We're just trying to assess what they kind of need.
I think, just giving you feedback, it's hard to answer the question. I have a kayak down there without understanding the physical space.
Well, yeah, we're trying, we don't know the physical space yet until we figure out what people need, right?
But did you, but I think you said? I think maybe it was you that mentioned, are all the lockers being moved inside?
That's okay, so.
That's a.
The tension.
Yeah, that was a, that's what I think you're trying to get at. And I was, I was waiting for you to finish, but like, are all the lockers moving inside?
We're considering what options exist both outside and inside existing structures and the best way to lay that out? It's, we're not sure exactly where things are moving. We have to figure out how much demand and how much space we need.
I would answer these questions differently if I knew there was an indoor space. I guess that's where I'm going.
Yeah, I guess.
Well, the indoor, indoor space would still be a locker, right? Uh, what we would do is, what we're trying to determine is? If we? You want to go, Kyle?
Well, I'd say the, so just to clarify, the, the, there's no intent of moving any boats physically inside for storage.
Ever.
We're talking specifically the lockers, whether they're the current full-size lockers or more day lockers for small.
And right now, you're, you're just asking.
Question, that's a good question.
Yes. Yeah, you're just asking, do you need small, medium or large?
Or if, or if you need a locker at all, because, because you get one for included in the price, you're like, I'll take a locker, but if there was? Hey, the storage will be a hundred and fifty dollars cheaper without a locker and we reduce the lockers by fifty percent.
Yeah.
There, it may make more sense to financially give people the option by using a locker or not. And if we have to install fifty less lockers, because people say it's not a priority for me? We can potentially fit a lot more sailboats, kayaks and paddleboards.
I, I, I get what you're saying and I get, and, and I, I just feel like when we're having these discussions, a lot of it is like trade-offs that aren't clear. Um, when you're answering the question, because to me, I would think, I would love? Of course I want my locker. Of course I don't want to carry my paddle, but if I knew I had to pay.
Well, that's what.
Charge this much, I would answer the question differently.
I think that's what it says here. So we just have to do a better job of presenting it, maybe? Tomorrow night, we'll, we'll give.
We need to give some, give some context.
More context before we ask the questions and then? If I need to do the design part of it, because that's probably the, the disconnect right now.
Yeah, I.
So I agree.
I would probably ask a question of, I have, do I have a locker today?
Yep.
Yes, so we know when the survey comes back, hey, I have a locker.
Well, they all have a locker, right? Because that's included in there.
Well, no, but you're asking everybody, aren't you?
Well, it's, it's if you have, currently I store a sailboat and do not need a locker access. I mean? No, we're not asking everybody. Well, we are asking everybody, but we really care about the sailboats. So that's what I said, yeah.
Like, how do you, how do you find out someone answering this has a sailboat or not?
Right. Yeah, I currently store a sailboat, but I, but I don't really need that locker access. I currently sell a boat and I would like a locker access. That's the question.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
And also the not applicable is at the very bottom. That's meant for anyone who's basically stating, I don't have a boat nor do I want a future boat. Not, not applicable at the bottom.
Um, on the drawing? I think it's awesome that you show the one and the four. At the gyms, you know how they have the rectangle with two?
Mm hmm.
Speaking as a sample size of one and being somewhat selfish? I would easily move to a twoer. I would no way in heck would I move to a oneer because I have a paddle. And so I put my paddle in there for my paddleboard. So I don't know if there's an option to show that of a two spot or you're thinking about it, but? That would double your size uh, instead of quadruple it.
I, I lost you there.
So if you have, you have a single locker right there? You've got four.
Yeah.
If you put four, where one is today, you get four times the number of people accommodated. I would like to see a middle option of.
There is, it's a small, medium, large, you see on the bottom there?
No, I'm for the drawing.
Oh, okay.
The drawing where you have.
Yeah, I, I know what you're.
You know what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Yes, it's like, it's like an out like this.
Turn with the top kind of goes there.
Yeah, like this, so you could store something long and have short in there and you have two instead of.
Yes, you could still sit, fit your paddle, just a paddle and hang up a bag for each one.
Right.
That's a great idea. I didn't think of that.
Well.
Well, but that's what we're asking is if, hey, if you, if we can get more paddleboards and kayaks, then this might be, end up being a board decision, right? Um, but in order to accommodate more? Then we, we're gonna have to? Either say that anybody new doesn't?
Yeah.
Get a locker at all, or can, if we do a small one where I can just throw my keys and sunscreen in there, I'm bringing my paddle and? Life jacket down every night, right? If you want us to accommodate the waitlist, we got to figure out a way to, to do that.
Yeah, I was just saying.
Now and into the future.
You're showing, you're showing a large, you're showing a small, I think the medium is that? Is that alcohol one like this?
And I was thinking it was just too stacked, but if you could actually fit a paddle in a medium, I think that would could change the answer.
I don't think you can. So it's, it's dry bag towel, change of clothes.
Well, with Michael's design, maybe it could.
Like this, Lisa, I mean.
I know, I know what you're saying, but I don't think, I don't think they, I think it has to be a large to fit.
There was an option, I think that they did, that they split a large one in half.
Yeah, there's not that option.
Right.
So we have to go with, yeah, we have to go.
You don't have this option?
Back in the gym.
Can't see it. Like in the gym.
Yeah.
It's like in the gym, like, yeah, I don't think they had that, but we can check.
And I mean, for the purposes of tomorrow, we obviously aren't going to be able to update physical boards. We can speak to that? Point while we're presenting and discussing as people go about. I think the question be, are we able to make a few of these updates prior to releasing this on the web? Is that something we could potentially do for my company? So? We can make, we can look for an image of that, Commissioner Kobe, and add that to the online? If, uh, if the board would like us to, and then we can make those earlier updates. We won't be able to make them to the boards. We'll be able to talk to those points.
And if it's not an option, don't even show it, but like if it is.
It, it may be, but it comes down to it, then we probably won't be able to fit it. Um, if you take that, like you're talking about, that's more of like a lar, almost like a large sign, so we'll still be able to fit.
Yeah.
Less gold. So what we're trying to determine is how vital that is to people. And if we say it's vital, then we need to know it. And then? And another question may be made, okay, you might have to pay for the option. If you, if you, if you need so much, we'll do, maybe we'll do sailboat? Spot rental storage and then the locker is separate.
Yeah, because many, many beaches don't actually offer lockers.
Right.
We historically have and obviously we don't take things away. It's very hard to take things away. But we've noticed especially with storage? Financial incentives are a big change and ever since we removed discounts for multiple vessels? The number of people having multiple vessels has shrunk significantly and we've got the waitlist down from a hundred down to, you know, twenty-something now. So if you do put a financial incentive for lockers, firstly, it's a large decrease in a capital expense to put the lockers in because they're not going to be cheap.
Yeah.
And also then on, we can also increase the number of storage opportunities, hence more recreation opportunities, because?
Yeah.
So having, having storage versus actual recreation, I, I think the trade-off to me would be having more recreation.
It's like an investment.
Yeah.
What was it? It's an investment that it's going to pay for itself. So like whatever option you give? It's going to pay for itself. And then the real, the question, which?
Eventually, yeah.
What you're saying is? It's just then a question of what priorities people have when they go down to the beach.
Yeah, yeah. And what's priority of the board?
Yeah.
Right?
Well, right, but I think if, and I could be wrong, but if? The design options are all fairly comparable in price, we would lean on the input from the community?
Yeah, yes, and no, but it also goes back.
This numbers, like.
And the spots, right?
Yeah. If everyone's coming back and says? If you get, if you get fifty percent say small and fifty percent say large, you're kind of winning because then you can do a combination. If you get a hundred percent say large? We may have to go back to the drawing board and figure out.
We have to talk to the board like, okay, so do you, which one do you want to make sure we accommodate that need? Of people say they want a locker no matter what, or? Giving more opportunities for people to paddleboard? Sailboat and kayak, right? So you, the board, that's where your hard decision comes in. You'll have to weigh which is, which is more important. Do we, do we say anybody who currently has? A boat on there, okay, they're going to get the lockers, but in the future, when we add more in? They may not install lockers, open up type thing. So that's discussion for later, later date, but it's good to know what people want.
Yeah.
Because if it was me, I have, I have, I kayak and I'd be like, I can, if I could save? Hundred bucks a year, I'm gonna walk down with my paddle and my? Life thus, but other people might say, no, I'm never going to do that.
Yeah, or if you're biking or running to the beach, you don't want to be carrying paddle.
Yeah. Yeah. Throw them in your backpack.
I don't know. Anyway, I do think Michael's idea about the, the longer one is actually not obvious and could be a good.
Absolutely, but this, again, still takes up more space, so, but definitely something to look at. That's what we need the input from.
Okay, anywhere questions on this slide? Okay, anywhere questions on this slide?
If, if I could just maybe say something about those lockers, again, I, I, I know exactly what you're saying. I know this type of locker, this, you know, the zigzaggy one. I am wondering, and I know it's available from few vendors. And it's not super widely available from everybody. I have a feeling if we show something very specific, like the zigzaggy one, that people will be like, oh, this is cool. And everybody's going to vote on it. We're very, we're limiting ourselves to, to the specific vendor and the one that we looked at, I don't think it has it. So I'm just wondering if maybe.
It could be for the design phase. I, I get what Lisa's saying. And, and right now, we're looking at small, medium or large versus design.
Right, right. We'll design it later.
Yeah.
We can move on.
And we'll keep that in, that, if we can find something like that, that's, go on our P A, start talking to people, so.
Just wondered if we remove the pictures. We asked people what they're looking for.
Yeah, you know what? That's, that's actually a better idea, just remove the pictures, because.
I was going to suggest that, but then I realized you can't remove the pictures from over there.
We can cover that up somehow.
That one's easier.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, I would, I would remove those pictures. Okay.
Yeah.
Cause it confuses everybody. I agree.
Right.
Okay.
It's, yes, people automatically are drawn to pictures, I know. We need, for this one in particular, we need words. This is different than the others. We're not looking for design aesthetics. It's just like very practical.
It's good, good conversation.
These are, these are the boards and please feel free to scan the QR code if you'd like, but I know how it is to do it in, in public and scroll through, through the phone. It will take you to the survey. And the last part of our presentation for today is just to explain what you will see if you go and click on this QR code or on the link. So if you're, if you're on the computer, you're, obviously your screen will be a little bit wider, not identical to this one, but very close. But if you're on your, on your phone, this is what you will see. We'll ask, we're asking for the name. And then you can join the survey here. And images on the phone are always small, but there's an option to click on them and they will, and they will get bigger. So you can enlarge them.
So cool.
You could also do it on the boards back there too. You can just.
We can have a board back there.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
They're all back here. Yeah.
Yeah. And then it will go through all the same stuff that we just looked at. It will go through trellis. It will ask the question on the trellis and because of the size limitation of the phone, the, the, all the, every question is like a two parts. First screen is, this is what we are doing. This is the plan. And here are the three options. Please pick one. And there's a short description of every option, one, two, three, for example, here.
That's very cool. I like, I love the fact that you're doing this. And you know, Andre was saying that we drive so much from the community, making it more accessible is just, it's incredible. Thank you.
Yes. And it's just going through every single, single page and.
It's nice.
So the question on the board is, would you like to do the survey on your, at home or on your computer? Or would you like to go back there and look at the boards and put your little stickies on them? We're open to whichever way you want.
Home, I was like, does it matter? Like?
Doesn't matter to us. What's nice, if you do it on the phones or anyone in the community does, it really starts to tabulate the data for us instantly.
Yeah.
But we also understand that it's not comfortable for people. So we're going to take any of the hand notes or preferences. And we'll just edit, add it in ourselves. So we capture everyone's vote.
That's great.
Great feedback tonight, because we'll probably do a little more present, have staff do more presentation of why we're asking these questions. And then turn it over to design ideas to Anya. So we'll, we'll massage that for tomorrow and make it a little more clear so that we're explaining this. And then we're going to, we're going to tape it. So anybody in the community, we're going to do a link to it so that anybody in the community can listen to it if they want. And then come back and answer the questions. So there'll be more context for them too. So we'll do that tomorrow.
Great. Well, thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. So everybody wants to do it on their phone or computer?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, um, thank you so much. Do you have anything else?
Okay, great, excellent.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Um, I think we can move forward to our next agenda item, which is the discussion of the early childhood food contract.
Bobby?
Yep. So we have a food contract currently with Taste for Kids Inc. That's up for renewal in August. They provide all the catering for our licensed early childhood children circle program. We've used them for the last four years and we've been very satisfied with their service and the quality of their food. They agreed to keep their price steady for this year again. The estimated cost for the contract is about eighty-five thousand dollars. We pay on a per meal basis, which you'll see in the contract and in the memo. This provider is a DCFS licensed provider. If you do provide food to licensed programs, it has to be on the provider list with DCFS. And they, they're very good when it comes to allergies. They move the meals from scratch, using healthy locally available ingredients. They use organic where possible. And that we, we've been very, very happy with them. They use, use them in other programs like, like G J K and some other local, local early childhood facilities. We are recommending to move the contract forward to, to July fifteen for approval. And we're looking for consensus or questions from the board to do that.
My only question is, how does this compare to other vendors?
Well, it's a, a very similar in cost. We bid it out a number of years ago and they were right in line and they've helped, kept the price the same. There's actually a very limited number of vendors available for this service. So you'll see in the, in the memo that legal counsel said, because of the complexity of, of what we're, we're bidding, that we can go sole provider. But it is right in line with what we paid before and with others. It's just, it's a very difficult contract to fill.
Yeah, we bid it out and then they haven't raised their costs. So we know they're in line, especially with the economy now, so.
The history behind this one is, I don't know if you were on the board at the time.
I was.
It was.
You know, and a children's circle parent.
Yeah, it was like, oh my gosh, when we found these people, it was like, I remember like having heart palpitations about how, because they were expensive and it was during the middle of COVID. And we couldn't find people, but I, when my kids who are now allowed to drive, were in children's circle. I don't know, Bobby, if you remember like.
I do remember.
Food gate of circa two thousand and whatever.
Yep.
When there's a problem with food, you hear about it. I have heard nothing about it. I've never had a parent come in here, unlike us, when we had, I think Andre was on the board, when I came in and complained about the food there. So I'm like, don't rock the boat, no increasing costs.
Yeah, we had, we made our own. What is our feedback? It sounds like the feedback's good from the parents.
Feedback's cool.
Feedback is excellent. The, I guess the only feed, feedback we received, people would like organic milk, but aren't willing to pay for it. So that's the only feedback we get on a regular basis around the food.
And we always suggest, we can get it for you. Would you, we do a survey practically every year. You want to, if you want organic food, it will cost us much more a month. Are you willing to pay that? And ninety percent are not, ten percent are. So that's why we have never done that. But we have a lot of allergies in that classroom and we've had no issues whatsoever. So to me, that's the big one.
Okay, I think we have consensus. Okay, moving forward.
Nice job.
Um, I do have a couple other business. Independent state festivities are taking place, obviously on the third and fourth. Are there any commissioners that want to walk in the parade? Any commissioners, children that want to ride, walk or ride on the float?
Yes, mine are planning their whole weekend around it.
Okay. Care about your kids?
Yeah, they insisted that you cannot go away for the parade.
I love that. That's awesome. Anybody else?
I, I'll see. So I'll ask my younger two, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you know.
I'll let you know. Well, odd question. I may have my nephew who's six with me.
Okay.
Could he?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
My children won't be here.
Okay.
But my nephew will be my party kid.
So what's her time, time one?
Beach theme, so lifeguard. Yeah. So, or beach.
You know, your beach shirts, we gave you, wear those on that, so.
Which I got yelled at from my daughter for wearing that, because apparently you're not supposed to wear glenco outfits if you're not working.
That's very well trained.
Like, she's like, dad, you can't, she said, dad, you can't wear that. It's like, gave it to me. You can only wear that when you're working.
Commissioner, our staff can't wear it to parties or, or when they're working.
Staff or G P D attire to parties or.
I'm learning, I'm learning a lot.
But you can wear it. So it's all good. And you'll let me know, Gary?
I'm, I'm likely to, the kids, high school kids.
Okay, they're not going to make it. You might walk, okay. We just need to.
You don't have a t-shirt, Gary.
Yes, please.
I do.
Yeah, if you, if children, you will bring, if you need shirts, we'll bring camp t-shirts for you.
Okay.
Just let us know what size and we'll bring assortment on that. So great. So to make sure we have enough seats or they can walk to and help hand count, get candy. If they want to help out candy, they have to walk. They can't throw it from the parade, but if they want to sit on the parade, they, on the float, they just sit there and wave. So it's really cute. So let us know. Thank you. That's great. We'll hope to see you out at the festivities on the, on the evening of third, the fireworks are second to none. So they're awesome. I just want to make it the, the board aware that there was an accident on Saturday. Not on our property, but there was a, a car that jumped a curb and hit four people that are going to the beach. Two were transported. So just make you aware that, that situation, that's the first time that's ever happened since I've been here. So they were our campers, unfortunately, but they're, they were two were transported. I think, believe they're doing okay. Yeah. Just, just make you aware if you heard anything like that. And that we did have some pretty violent storms here Sunday night, the, the power is knocked out in this building, which caused, you know, some computer issues and elevator issues, which were all resolved by the time we opened. So that was good. Little flooding in different areas because of the amount of rain that came in such a short time. So kudos to the team to get everything up and running again. So. And Bobby, he lived so close, he was here within, the fire alarms were going off, everything. He checked the whole building, make sure there's no fire. So appreciate him, his attentiveness on that on a Saturday evening. So.
Thank you.
That was awesome. Other than that, I think that's it. Even, even though we can't believe it's July fourth already and we're three weeks into camp, right? So, yeah. But that's it.
Okay, well, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Are you have to move first? But you were eager.
Are you moving? Are you moving? You're moving.
They so moved.
So moved.
Second. All right, okay, all in favor. All right, motion passes. Lisa, please record the time.
All right, eight twenty-two. Thank you all. Really good.
I can't second somebody who wasn't moved. Oh, seconds, I don't know.